Your Honor, I move that we approve the minutes of the August 8th, 2023 that's in our packet.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 8th, 2023 council meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, I also move that we approve the amendments to the July 25th, 2023 minutes that are outlined in our packet and the correction is highlighted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes amended minutes of the 25th of July, 23th meeting. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to, as soon as I can find them, I'd like to read just what we're changing so that there is transparency. Where did it go? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not finding it. Miranda, can you let us know?
Um, yeah, it was reported that Carthage Park was open at the time and it is not in fact, it was not open at the time, so it just takes out that it was not open and it was still under construction. And that was during Abby's report.
Okay, thank you, Miranda.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council, step to the podium, state your name and address and your business. We will give five minutes per speaker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. In front of each of you, you should have a flyer, looks something to the effect of this, talks about a variety of commonly used economic development incentives that are actually under the control and purview of the City Council. At this point in time, we do have several projects I'm working on utilizing potentially some of these terms and programs in place, but as opposed to trying to present the project as well as explain the program, I thought I would just kind of try and educate a little bit on some of these. So this is the first step in the education on some of the economic development incentives available. And then my intent is, after speaking with Mr. Dagen about the best way to kind of try and get some time with you all where we can just have a more casual chat, so I'll be attending some of your committee meetings in the month of September. Those of you on multiple committee meetings, you could hear from me a lot. So I hope you do enjoy that time. And then, just a quick question, in addition to this, I can also record little videos that talk about some of these programs. If I did that, would you guys actually watch them? Maybe?
Sure.
So a few, okay, so we'll try that out and then, you know, they'll be open to the public as well to learn of kind of what the Carthage Economic Development Corporation's going on. And really, that's it, so thank you all very much and I'm glad my time didn't start while I was messing with the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Roberts, my address is 6226 County Road 120 in Carthage. I am the CEO of the Fairacres Family YMCA, for those that might not know, and I would like to start by thanking yourself and the City Council for putting your trust into the Y and our staffing and experience expertise to effectively and safely manage the outdoor pools this year. Working with Abby as a new Parks and Rec Director and Amy as the new YMCA Aquatics Director allowed for a lot of learning, evaluating, and making some well-needed changes to the facility and programming as both organizations were working through major staffing changes. Since Abby has been hired, I have watched and worked with her and her staff alongside with myself, Amy, and the Y staff to try to make the aquatic facilities as inviting and functional as possible. Abby and her department did a great job helping prepare the pool for the season with power washing, painting, plumbing, and addressing some critical issues and more, and the Y staff maintained and managed the facility all summer. With the new upgraded chlorination system and identifying some areas that were a source of large continuous leaking issues allowed some more normal operating procedures and chemical control we haven't had in decades. However, attendance overall was slightly down compared to last year, due mostly because we were open seven days less this year compared to 2022, and we didn't have the baby pool open at Muni due to the identified leak. So that hurt the attendance and opportunity to introduce water to toddlers and babies in our community at the level we had hoped. Highlights from this year, operating the pool, we had 8,863 swimmers at Muni, or 121 per day, and we had 1,143 swimmers at Central, or 29 per day. On the 4th of July, we set a single day record for the pool with 887 swimmers, and that was in conjunction with the Chamber event and agreement with the city to offer free swimming that day for that, for the 4th of July festival. I don't know what the name is called. It was awesome. Fifty facility rentals this year, which is, normally we do about 10, so we did 43 this year at Muni and seven at Central. And then, just for additional attendance and usage data, we only, those attendance that I told you are just the people that come during our operation hours, which is noon to six, Monday through Sunday. For additional attendance and usage data, Carthage and Lamar summer swim teams practiced daily at the pool this summer. Lamar's swimming pool is no longer open, so we had 45 Carthage swimmers and 20 Lamar swimmers that practiced every day. We hosted two swim meets this year, the first one had 250 swimmers registered and was a one-day meet in June. The second meet had 273 swimmers registered and was a two-day meet in July. And we don't keep attendance for rentals, but they usually have anywhere from about 30 to 100 people that attend. The most important thing of the whole summer, though, no major injuries. Really, there weren't very many minor ones either. I think our staff really stepped up this year and did a great job at what I call pre-lifeguarding, making sure that they don't have to put some of their skills to work. So overall, it was a successful outdoor pool season, and the YMCA looks forward to working with Abby and the City of Carthage in the future to provide safe fund and inviting aquatic facilities and programs to citizens of Carthage and visitors to our wonderful community. That's all I have for you all. Any questions on the pool? Grill me now.
Thank you.
That's great, Jonathan. Thanks, Jonathan.
My name is Bren Flannigan, I live at 801 South Country Club Road, and I'm here to express my disappointment bordering on discuss, if you will, with this divided city that you, some of you, have foisted upon us. We have neighbors that aren't waving to one another. We have high school classmates that are not speaking to one another. We have four members of the council that are under recall efforts. We have a distinguished board of the CWEP that is being publicly accused of criminal activity. I've seen demands for the resignation of the city attorney. I've seen demands for the resignation of the city administrator. I've seen demands for the resignation of the mayor. Very, very disturbing. I would submit, if you don't recognize or think that we currently are dealing with a divided environment, well, then you don't live in Carthage. I think there are two primary reasons for this. One is inadequate or potentially incompetent leadership at several levels. Mr. Mayor, we've talked before, I know how you feel about delegation of authority, down to power down to the department heads and that sort of thing, which is all well and good. I would simply caution you that after 30 years serving in Uncle Sam's Army, I learned that there is a very short distance between delegation and dereliction. We need you to get your hands back on the reins so that we can get this thing headed in the right direction. The other problem we've got is communication. And we've had a probably year-plus of communications issues, certainly exacerbated by the lack of a newspaper. But we've got some communications issues going on. The most recent example, of course, is this whole CWEP Board, City Council misunderstanding, whatever it is. I don't know what caused it. I've been told it's a vendetta that was launched against some employee. I've been told, no, no, wasn't that at all, it was simply administrative error with sufficient of information that was not properly submitted or received. And then I've heard, no, it's a longstanding feud simmering between departments of the city with regard to differences in paying compensation. Don't make any difference. From my perspective, it all gets back down to a failure to communicate with one another and get things moving forward. It's not too late to fix a lot of this, but we have to recognize the challenge. I sat in last week on an ad hoc committee put together by the mayor to kind of work through the city and CWEP Board issues. I thought it was a fairly productive meeting, then I was disappointed at the very end when one of the actual members stood up and said, you know, this is great, we actually had a conversation, we got something which accomplished, we should do this at all times going forward. And my first thought was, well, excuse me, but I don't necessarily agree with your breaking arm trying to pat yourself on the back for damage control efforts when in fact you were at the helm of the ship when we ran into the iceberg in the first place. We need to get better. We need to be adults. We need to look one another in the eye, realize that we are all neighbors, we're nonpartisan. There's no Democrats or Republicans in this room by design. We need to have conversations, open conversations with one another and have adult conversations. We're not serving the city properly. I've heard some of you claim that, well, I've got a lot of city government experience. Well, okay, maybe you do, but I'll tell you what, the last couple of weeks, this has looked like amateur hour from my perspective as an outside observer. I'm tired of reading about Carthage on the front page of the Chronicle and the front page of the Globe because it's all dirty news. While meanwhile, just below is an article on the investment, business investment in Joplin. New housing going up in the community. New investment going on, and where are we? Well, we're not mentioned at all, except when it comes down to, well, there's probably some personality issues down there. My plea to all of you that sit in this room, check your ego card at the door and pick up your public servant card and help us move forward. We have to get beyond where we are now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jana Schramm, that's J-A-N-A-S-C-H-R-A-M-M. I live at 1521 Grand. Brandy is my neighbor across the street, Mark is two doors down. I've had children grow up in this community, I'm vested, like it or not. So here I am. Lack, L-A-C-K. The current challenges in our community stem from the lack of leadership, lack of transparency, lack of trust in city officials. It is our duty as citizens of Carthage to make this council accountable to us. We have lost confidence in several members of the council and that is, and that they would do best for what is in the interest of Carthage. Thank you to the council members who took another look at the CWEP Board dismissal and voted with their constituents' wishes to do what was best for the city. Mayor Reif is known to be known as a great guy, my boys knew him in scouts, but now, I'm sorry, you're a weak leader and you're taking manipulation, you're being manipulated by Mark Ella and Greg Dagen. Mark, you would not vote to open the conversation about firing the Board of Directors of Carthage Water and Electric. This is the main reason for the recall against you. We do not want you stepping in as mayor of Carthage when you and Greg run off Dan. You do not listen to constituents, even if they're sitting in front of you. You have your own personal agenda to become mayor within our conversations about the recall. Many people stated it was about time and that the council cannot get away with what they have been doing in our town. Eighty percent of the registered voters in Ward Five that were approached were in favor of your recall. Remember, you are not the voice of the people unless you listen to the voice of the people. Greg Dagen, you have personally divided this town. You have, and also have an ulterior motive that is not in the best interest of our town. This is not your town, you don't even live here. Because of you alone, personnel and department heads have been removed or forced to leave their positions. Nearly 100 years of cumulative service and institutional knowledge is gone. Tom Short, 25 years. Mark Peterson, 26 years. Replaced with Abby Almendinger, who had no experience to be the park leader, other than she had a willingness to do it. And I hope you don't become his puppet too, because I had a lot of respect for you, Abby. Melanie Blizzard, Memorial Hall and Civil War Museum, had 20 years. Five years each, Kevin Kinsley and Aaron Borland. And these are only a few we're going to name that you gave a hard time to. This town knows your next target is Chuck Bryant with 27 years. We see you whittling away at Carthage Water and Electric with all the new ordinances and the attempted firing of the board, and you had everybody on board with that. We, the citizens of Carthage, are watching as this plays out. The employees of Carthage Water and Electric are watching as the company they have loved so long is being systematically destroyed. Questions the city needs to answer that came up at the meeting on August 14th. How did they get to this point? Why do we need to change anything? What are we doing poorly to bring this on? Greg, you have reworked the organizational chart for the city so that you can use your staff directly under you to buffer yourself from being named the instigator. But it is you that are directly responsible for the actions that have taken place to cause havoc in this city and in your staff. The three staffers that spoke last week in favor of you were directly under you and new employees. That created a laughable narrative about how to observe your leadership and what you do. Not only is it enough to make the lives of the city staff miserable, but you think everybody is a criminal and needs to be prosecuted. Your police background is casting darkness on this city. Who's on, who is on the list that stands in your way? Who's next? Who are you going to go after? Are they in this room? I bet they are, we're watching. All the good members of the City Council are watching you too. Terry, Brandy, I hope you're on that list. Tiffany, Alan, Chris and Robin, thank you. You need to watch. That brings me to the question, should a man that oversaw the police department as chief get to hold the purse strings for the same department? That's questionable to a lot of people. To the council, we ask to be transparent to the public. Where's the technology so all the citizens can see you? Two, provide meeting minutes that have content allowing citizens to understand what transpired. And leave this, and three, leave the Carthage Water and Electric to work as it is now. Do not mess with something that is working well for a city and is, and we are very happy with. David Armstrong, you commented for the balance of power between Carthage Water and Electric and the city.
Your time's up.
You're next on the recall list.
Thank you.
Watch, W-A-T-C. Watch.
Good evening, my name is Darren Cogier, 520 East Centennial here in Carthage. Men and women of council, I'm here this evening in the capacity of Chair of the Firefighter Police Officer Pension Board to explain Council Bill 2360. You'll find that tonight in the new business section of your agenda. Earlier this year, the pension board in the city were informed that BMO Harris Bank is exiting the institutional trust business at the end of this year, thus ending a nearly 20-year relationship that we've had with this company. There are provisions in the firefighter police officer pension that state that the retirement dollars must be held at a trust company, thus the relationship. On or about 12/29/23, all institutional trusts managed by BMO, including ours, will transfer to Midwest Family of Companies, also known as MITC, a similar company that is based in Overland Park, Kansas. Council Bill 2360 is merely an administrative dealing, an acknowledgement that you know it's going to take place. I equate it to getting that email that the sender requests a response. They are going to do it, you know, we just have to acknowledge it. We understand that the current staff that is doing the job for us will stay in place. There's some thought they may stay in Milwaukee, we don't know. In your packet, it states, MITC will assume all rights, obligations and duties of BMO Harris Bank under the agreements dating back to February 2nd, 2004. This assignment does not change the fee schedules or underlying cash sweep vehicle for the accounts covered by the agreements. Now, will they adhere to that last part going forward? That remains to be seen, but we'll update you about future developments. In two weeks, I recommend that you vote yes to agree to this proposed trust company change. Are there any questions that you have that pertain to the firefighter police officer pension board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay. Well, we heard some pretty strongly worded comments this evening, and all I can say is I think that a lot of the information was very one-sided and not, not both sides of the story were, were heard. I'm not going to debate or argument, argue it in this forum, but we will move on to reports of standing committees. Budget Ways and Means, Chairman Snow.
Thank you, Your Honor. Budget Ways and Means Committee actually have had two meetings in the last couple of weeks. On 8/14, the committee met to hear a proposal from the Boots Foundation about handling tourism in their visitor center that they're currently building. I think that was all that was discussed at that meeting. On 8/16, the committee met again to discuss, city staff was wanting direction on whether to hire a tourism director or not, based on the Boots proposal. There was a lot of discussion and the committee voted to have city staff move forward with hiring that tourism director. Do I need to make a motion now to hire the tourism director or?
We already did, I was going to announce that here in a minute, so.
Okay, so the city, the committee voted to move forward with hiring a tourism director. And at that meeting also, it was voted, there was a motion made to have the tourism director work with the Boots Foundation to apply for a grant to the McCune Brooks Trust to help them complete the green space around the visitor center. So that was all. Our next meeting is still currently up in the air. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is to take place on September 14th, which we will be at MML Conference, so we're looking at moving it a week earlier or a week later based on the ability to get a quorum. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims, Chairperson Blair.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Committee on Insurance Audits and Claims met tonight in council chambers at 5:30. We discussed the pros and cons of moving forward with Council Bill 2356. If you recall, last week, we opted to table that because there were some significant language concerns and organizational concerns that Councilperson Cossey brought up. However, there has not been enough time to fully vet and reconcile some of the edits that she provided, which are in your packet and I think are a good direction to go, but our time constraints are such that we decided it makes more sense to go with the original language of the bill to meet the deadline required by the state. Flawed as it may be, we feel good about that since it has been used in the past and it was provided as an example from the state, but we also, even though we're going to encourage you all to vote for it tonight in our emergency ordinance to pass it, we have the goal as a committee to still move forward with the edits and effort to clarify and efforts to simplify the language, make it more transparent, reconcile it with the other ethics policy that we have. That just requires a lot of different hoops to jump through that we don't necessarily have time for. So we're going to do this good enough one for right now, but then we are committed to making it better sooner than later. So we will be going back to the original language that you can find on the agenda in your packet for Council Bill 2356. And that's all I need to do for that, right? Okay. The second thing we talked about, we heard from Michael Miller with HR. He was discussing changing two positions from exempt to non-exempt based on his review of the Federal Labor Standards Act and comparing it surrounding HR policies of different cities in the area. We did ask him to amend it slightly, so you'll find on the table, he did print off the latest edition. We had some questions about clarifying how much weight was considered heavy lifting, so he provided a bit more context in that to just make sure people who were looking at that job description have a clear idea what that means. But otherwise, the big piece of that is that he changed it, like I said, from exempt to non-exempt. So those edits you can see on your desk, and I make a motion that we accept those changes as presented in the most latest copy on your desk.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the amended job descriptions. And do we want to do these one at a time or do we just want to combine the two? I'm fine with combining them. So Gulf Maintenance Supervisor and Park Superintendent. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We also discuss approving a payment of up to $135 an employee for an upcoming healthcare fair that's offered by the city or through Freeman for the city. And I would like to make a motion now that we approve those funds for city staff. Sorry, second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the funds for the upcoming health fair. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We heard from staff that we are getting officially out of our contract hopefully with Open Gov even after their latest administration because they continue to not deliver on what we need, so we are severing that relationship in effort to find what works best for the city. Tracy also mentioned that she'll be closing out the year tomorrow, so congrats on that wherever Tracy went. There you are. That's a big undertaking and it's almost done. Greg updated the committee on the forensic audit in that meetings have been taking place weekly at this point, and at this time, he can only say that there are a few specific accounts that are of interest and the city is providing whatever additional documentation that they are requesting at this time. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 12th at 5:30 in council chambers.
All right, thank you. Public Safety Committee, Chairman Ella.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety met last night, 5:30 here in council chambers. Several items on the agenda to present. First of all, under old business, we had tabled, a citizen was requesting clarification on front yard parking at the corner of Highland and Fulton. This falls under Section 23-429 of our ordinance. Chief Hawkins and also Mr. Carney with Public Works discussed the issue and believe that the ordinance does not need to be changed at this time, so no action was taken, but we did address that. Under other business, Jeanette Nye with Fairacres Family Y was, spoke to the committee regarding the Maple Leaf 5K race that's going to be held on Friday, October 20th. She's requesting certain roads to be closed as well as assistance with police officers just as the same as we've done this in the past. So at this time, I would move that we approve the closure of Georgie Phelps Boulevard from Grand Avenue to South Fulton Street, 5:30 to 7:30 on Friday, October 20th for the annual Maple Leaf 5K race. Second.
All right, I've got a motion in a second to approve closures and for, for the 5K race on the 20th of October for the Maple October for the Maple Leaf 5K. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Jew Champagne with the Bridge Church spoke to the committee. They are having the 2023 rally in the park. It will be held on September 17th. It's the same, it has been done in the past couple of years for the run, requesting closure of certain streets as well as continuing that closure if there is inclement weather to where they can put vehicles around this area. So, at this time, I would move that we approve the closure of streets around and connect to the 800 block of South Main Street, and that would be from South Main Street between Chestnut Avenue and Knight Street, and Knight Street between Main Street and Lion Street to be closed from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then Chestnut between Main Street and Lion Street be closed from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and allowing on Chestnut that vehicles be given permission to back into the parking spaces on Chestnut.
Second. Have a motion in a second to allow street closures and backing into parking spaces for the rally of the park as outlined in Mr. Ella's motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Julie Reams, President of the Carthage Chamber, discussed the 2023 Maple Leaf Festival. On each one, at your desk, you all have a packet. You actually have two packets, one from Public Services as well, the one that just says Maple Leaf Festival on it and talks about the closing and vacating of the streets for Monday, October 16th, Friday, October 20th, and Saturday, October 21st. There's also a vent, Central Park, on Saturday, the 14th for Oktoberfest regarding the security of which they're working that out with the Police Department. New event on Tuesday, October 17th, is Taco Tuesday Event in the park, and Friday, October 23th concert on the square. The roads and everything are the same as we've always done every year with the exception it will be closing on the northwest part in front of the Sheriff's Department to put a stage there earlier in the day than has normally been done. So, without trying to list all of these, Your Honor, that's why we have the packet, I would move at this time that we approve the closures as well as the events and the permission to allow the art craft concession nonprofits to sell under the chamber license as we have every year, and requesting permission to temporarily place signage in the public right of way in the proposal for the annual Maple Leaf Festival.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the closures, events, and support for the annual Maple Leaf Festival as outlined in the packet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Additionally, the Sheriff's Department, they have their annual Christmas shopping with an officer. They do a fundraiser for that. This year, the fundraiser's gonna be October 7th from 5:30 to 9:00 PM. It's on a Saturday night. Sheriff Kaiser is requesting to close the south side of the square from 4:30 to 9:00. So, at this time, I would move that we authorize the closing of the south side of the square on October 7th from 4:30 PM to 9:00 PM for their event.
Second. Have a motion in a second to allow for the closure of the south side of the square between 4:30 and 9:00 PM on October 7th for the fundraiser for the Sheriff's Department. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Finally, the Chief Huntley talked to the committee about bids that they had sent out and had received back for the brush truck skid unit. There were three bids, the lowest bid coming in at $21,298, and that was from Feld Fire. So, this time, I would move that we accept the lowest best bid from Feld Fire in the amount of $21,298.
Second. Have a motion in a second to accept the lowest best bid from Feld Fire.
Feld Fire, yes, sir.
For the brush truck equipment in the amount of $21,288. Any discussion?
$298.
Ninety-eight.
$298, and these funds will come out of the use tax funds.
All right. $298. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Then staff reports were given, and I'm sure the two chiefs will talk about those tonight to pass on. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 18th, 5:30 here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public Services Committee, Chairman Hardesty.
Okay. I'm gonna try to follow that as streamlined as I can. You've got a pile of paperwork on your desk here, and I tried to number as I get to it. Some are motions and some are council bills, and here we go. We met on August 15th, 5:30 in chambers. We discussed the KCAH fundraising event. It's a local Hispanic radio station. They're gonna hold their annual fundraising event in Carter Park. It's going to take place, or scheduled to take place, Sunday, September 3rd from noon to 3:00. It's open to the public. They're gonna have music, bounce houses, and food. Their application to the committee was one of the most impressive that I've ever seen. It came notarized on a legal form, complete with pictures of the food they plan to serve. It was absolutely amazing. So, it didn't take much discussion to pass that we were gonna motion this onto the council. So, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this so we can all eat really good-looking food.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve a fundraiser for KCAH at Carter Park on September 3rd between noon and 3:00. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Our second agenda item was, we discussed the Maple Leaf Festival and the itinerary. There are some new changes. Julie has done some amazing work on this year's Maple Leaf, and I, for one, am very looking forward to it. They're adding an Oktoberfest. There's gonna be a Taco Tuesday contest, which sounds amazing. And she's also bringing back the Chicken Pageant, if anybody remembers that. And on your pile of paperwork for me, you'll see labeled one, the Maple Leaf Festival has the complete itinerary of all the events that they've been advertising. I am not gonna go through it event by event. So, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we approve anything that Julie wants to do with Maple Leaf.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the Maple Leaf activities as outlined in the packet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Wonderful. Thank you. The next item of business was, we discussed the Fairway IQ. It's a pace of play system. It's a system that goes on to your golf carts, and it takes the place of a course marshal. So, you don't have a guy riding around telling you to hurry up and get your play going. It's a subscription. It's a three-year contract. It's $8,910 a year. It sounds like it's a wonderful deal, and it is GPS-based, so it should operate really well. We are passing that on to the council, and you'll see that in Council Bill 2357, first reading tonight. Our next order of business, we discussed the golf simulator contract with the YMCA. What it does is it takes the place and it allows to promote the simulator with the YMCA and the golf course, both at once. You'll see that on the first reading for Council Bill 2358. Again, a very nice, very nice marriage of utilization and capabilities. Number five, we discussed the Little League Charter. We had a packet of this. I didn't copy this for you. What this is, Park and Rec is taking on the Carter recreational baseball that was previously run by a third party. They no longer have time to do it, and with county, with community input, they favor the Little League program versus a Cal Ripken program. And what this does, I've been told, Abby, if you will give me the high sign on this, I've been told that this Little League program, should it be reinstated, it makes us the longest-running Little League program in Missouri.
Correct.
Correct. So, we are, we hope to, with a motion to council at this time, hope to reinstate the Little League program and get us back on track in a little bit of the history books.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the Little League Charter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all. Next, we considered and discussed at Events Program Funding. There's more work to be done on it as far as funding sources and policies. That's with our Park and Rec person that's working on actual recreation. There's no council action required at this time, and I thought that you needed to hear that. We also discussed a Parks Equipment Liability Waiver. And what it does, we actually have some volunteers that work with some of the Park and Rec equipment. And what it does is it holds the city and Park and Rec free from liability from those volunteers using the equipment to work at parks. I at first hoped I'd gotten to borrow a backhoe, but it doesn't work that way. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for council to approve the Park and Rec's Equipment Liability Waiver.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve an Equipment Liability Waiver for the Parks Department. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Next, on your pile of paperwork for me, we discussed an independent contractor agreement for umpires and referees, and since we're taking over baseball, that allows Park and Rec to hire outside umpires and referees for their supposed program. And what this contract agreement covers is what's expected of them. It's also complete with background checks, which I felt was extremely important. And it also allows the events and recreational coordinator to have the authority to sign as the city representative instead of having to go through the entire long run-out process to have the mayor sign it. She is able to act as the city representative on these personal contracts. So, I make a motion at this time to approve this.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve an independent contract agreement form for umpires and refs.
Umpires and refs, yep.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Motion carried.
The next one, I'm almost halfway done. The next one is an independent contractor agreement for third-party programs. She's got some wonderful ideas as far as recreation. And what this does, this agreement, it allows to hire third parties for instruction like lessons or recreational play or classes in city parks and facilities. It also, like the other one, gives the coordinator the authority to sign as the city representative. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve an independent contractor agreement for third-party.
Yeah.
What was the wording?
Third-party contract.
Third-party contract, all right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The next one, item 10, I'm going to 14. We discussed a Halloween event on Grand and Main. We've had for years kind of a informal closure of Grand and Main for kids to be safe from cars and vehicle traffic. Some people call it the Halloween tax for people that live there. However, there are tons of people that enjoy that and are very welcoming of the kids that come and trick-or-treat. What our events coordinator has had the idea of is to actually formally close the streets from Centennial to Macon and to, in working out this whole process, to include possibly porta-potties and food trucks in that area for the parents to actually have something more than trick-or-treat for the kids and trick-or-beer like the firefighters used to do. And what you'll see in your packet on number four is the map of the area. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Halloween event on Grand and Main with the street officially closed from Centennial to Macon.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Halloween event for Centennial or for Grand and Main Streets, which would officially close the streets from Centennial to Macon and allow for some additional amenities as well. Any discussion? Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you. More than any other event that we have done in Carthage, I have received more complaint calls about this over the years from the individuals who live on that street. I have, there have been several alternatives proposed over the years, such as a rotating schedule of streets. Last year, I think what we did was we optionally had people stationed that if it got busy, then we closed. I just know that the individuals who live there, the Halloween tax is very real, and the peer pressure to perform at Halloween is something that they often feel they have to succumb to. I cannot vote in favor of closing the streets based on the feedback I've received from those citizens over the years, but I do wish we could find a solution so that we can still support the kids getting out and our community. I think our community is strong enough that we can find an alternative way to do this. But I just know that I'm gonna get those calls again, and I'm gonna at least say that I try.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Armstrong on closing the street. I think that if the city is gonna promote an event, then we should promote that event on city property, not in city streets. So, if we wanna have an event like this, I believe we could use Briggs Park, which is in close proximity to those streets that they're requesting to be closed. We have Central Park that's just a few blocks away. I believe the event would be well-attended, but I don't agree with using those two streets for this event. So, I agree with Mr. Armstrong. I'll be voting no.
Your Honor, if I could clarify, this is a supplement. Oh, I'm sorry. I believe that what the Parks Department is trying to do, and Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, is to provide more things. That way, if the residents of Grand, if they don't wanna turn on their lights, if they don't wanna pay the Halloween candy tax, then there's something else there. So, there's food trucks, there's the possibility of, at some point in time, even bringing in like bounce houses to where if the residents didn't want to have their doors open, there was still something for the children to do. So, Abby, do you have anything to add to that? No, I think you clarified it quite well. You know, we just, that's where the kids are already going, so we thought we would just elevate this event and make it, you know, it's already happening, and it's not not gonna happen at that location. So, we just thought that it would be, you know, a really simple and fun event for people to do, and is already happening at that location. So, that was just the intent, although I don't know if the chief wants to clarify about the road closure.
Well, I would agree with Mr. Armstrong when he said in years past, it's actually been several years, where we have officers stationed at those key intersections, and when the number of kids... when the number of kids rises to where it's no longer safe, then we shut it down. So it's not been through committee or council to actually make a formal city sponsored event. It was just, we have officers there for safety reasons and shut it down. We also, as has been pointed out at the police department, we get numerous complaints specifically saying, why did the city choose this neighborhood? Well, we didn't. None of us did, but I forget how we said it, but that's just where the kids go.
Would there be a way to maintain what we've been doing so it's, it's more of a naturally occurring? If it gets too dangerous, you keep doing what you've been doing with putting officers there and then still make it official by having at Griggs, like you mentioned, something where we can maybe draw the crowd that will inevitably be there, but it would be on city land? Is there a way to compromise that?
Something to look at, Mr. Allen.
Your honor, we casually discussed a little bit about this public safety last night and there was supposed to be more information. I believe we were going to be coming back to public safety that would be involved because there's insurance questions involved and some different things. I know we have a motion on the table, but if we could look at, if it fails, then maybe we table this until we get that affirmation that comes back to public safety and then come up with something if we can.
May your citizen address this?
Normally, we're, we're through there, but, but in this case, I, I will allow, if, if you've got just a short comment.
I live at 1184 South Main Street, that's the corner of Main and Macon. For years, we have had between 800 and 1700 kids ask for candy at our door. Now, I don't want a food truck parked in front of my house. I don't want a bounce house out in the middle of the street because I can't imagine any homeowner in that area that's going to take the liability of having some of these things in place. Please consider the citizens and don't give this to us again.
Your honor, I would move that we table this until after public safety can look at this and discuss with the public services at our next meeting, which would be ours is on the September the 18th.
It's motion to table. It's motion to table. No, it's not amendment, it's a motion to table. Second. Okay. So I've got a motion to table until September, what was the date?
September 18th is when the next public safety meeting is.
Until September the 18th?
Yeah, our meeting, and I'm not sure when the council meeting would be, the 19th?
September 26th.
26th. So the September 26th meeting.
September 26th council meeting.
26th.
All right, I have a motion and a second to table that motion until September 26th council meeting. Any discussion? Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, your honor. I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of closing the street then. I'm not going to be in favor of closing the street now. I will not be in favor of voting to table this decision until later. I think it's an easy decision and I think we should run now.
Mr. Allen.
Your honor, part of, part of the reason for table and discussion is to possibly look at maybe a city location. So that's several things to discuss.
Alter the plan. All right. I've got a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Next item of agenda is, we discussed the memorial hall rates. They've been, we discussed them, they've been adjusted from a flat rate to an hourly rate and what that actually accomplishes is the ability to use memorial hall for shorter events. Instead of paying a large block when you only need it for a few hours, you can rent it for a few hours. And you have as number five in your pile of paperwork for me, a suggestion of the rates and at this point, I would like to make a motion to approve those changed memorial hall rates.
Second. Is that a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proposed memorial hall change, rate changes. Any discussion? Mr. Armstrong. As a former memorial hall janitor, I think that these changes are long overdue and I think that Abby's done a great job of putting them together. All right. Anything further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, next item of agenda, you're almost done listening to me talk. We discussed a bid for a 50-foot man lift that has been talked about and bandied about in the budget for, we believe, the last three years at least. The only bid that came in was $20,000 over the allotted budget amount and we felt that at this time that that was pretty ridiculous and coupled with the fact that it wouldn't be delivered until 2025. They have a two-year out delivery date. There's no council asking required because we rejected that bid. Next item of agenda, we discussed repealing the existing park and rec cost recovery policy. You'll see that tonight in the council bill 2359. We discussed the reworked park and rec cost recovery policy that's been brought forth and that is number six in your pile of paperwork for a visual aid there. The previous one was decided by the committee to be a little top-heavy. It was cumbersome, it was hard to understand. This one is only four pages. It's easier to understand for the citizens and the groups to realize what they're getting for their pricing and how it can be beneficial to different groups. And you'll see that in first reading tonight for council bill 2359. In staff reports, we heard various things, but the one I wanted to bring forward that's alarming is that, and I believe we've also heard from this from the Kellogg Lake Board, the emerald ash borer infestation is taking hold in this area and we have many ash trees in our park system. So there are potentially tons of ash trees that will need to be removed to try to quell this. There's more to come on that as it gets investigated. Our next meeting is September 19th, 5:30 in chambers. And finally, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Public Works, Chairman Armstrong.
Thank you, your honor. Public Works is currently between meetings. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be the first Tuesday of September. We do have one item on the agenda tonight, which is resolution 2006, which is for a TAP grant. If you may manage to make it that far in our incredibly long pack at this time, you'll notice that we started this program in 2010 and we have gone through several phases and we have several phases still planned out. This is one of the best and most successful programs that Public Works has done and that the city of Carthage has, has had, at least in my time of council. And I fully endorse this and hope that we continue to pursue these grants and continue to work through the phases that we have planned. So this is a great program and one that we, we need.
All right. Oops. All right, we'll move on to report a special committees and board liaisons. Mr. Snow.
Thank you, your honor. Carthage Water and Electric Board met last Thursday. In their meeting, they voted to enter into an agreement with the company to conduct a salary study. I saw some emails today. In that meeting, the mayor asked that they forward the information about the company that was selected to the council. So the council was aware of what this company is and who they are that are going to be conducting the salary study. The salary study is going to be like every other salary study that's been conducted in the city. The company is going to come meet with the city, meet with the water and electric board and determine the peer group that will be used to get these salaries. In May, the water and electric board agreed to do a salary study. We voted in June for the city to conduct a water, a salary study. We're two months past June now. The city has not gotten any bids to do a salary study for water and electric. The salary study isn't something that's going to take two weeks to conduct. The salary study is going to take several months once the company gets chosen and comes to meet and establish the guidelines that they're going to use to conduct this salary study. People continue to ask me all the time, what do we need to do to move past the issues that we've had with the water and electric board? I believe the way that we have to move forward is we have to stop creating an us and them. The water and electric board is a group of men who their only interest is to provide the best service that we can have with the city of Carthage. They don't have any financial interests to gain. They don't have any interest other than providing the citizens of Carthage with one of the best utilities in the country. They have got awards for the electric reliability, the water, the wastewater. The water and electric board is not us, us against them. They want to conduct this salary study to, to satisfy everyone that the salaries that are being paid are in line. If they're not, the water and electric board is prepared to make adjustments where they're needed. So this, the emails that I saw today were pretty alarming. It's like, you know, why, why are, why are you doing this? We said we're going to do this. Let's move forward. You know, the whole reason why the charter was set up with the water and electric board being the one to run the utility is because they have the knowledge, the members of that board have years of knowledge in utilities and running the water and electric plant and running our utilities in the city. They don't take this lightly. I mean, there are things right now, today, the heat, the way it is, we're getting conserve, conservation advisories from SPA. Water and electric board doesn't have anything to do with that. SPA can say shut it off and it gets shut off. We don't, they don't control those, those things, so they have to learn how to work with those things. We had an event Monday, yesterday afternoon, I believe it was, we hit 66,000, 66 megawatts of usage. That's the highest our usage has been since 2012. So the water and electric board doing this salary study is not to bypass council or bypass anyone else here at city hall being a part of it. The meetings that they will have with the, with the consultants that are going to do this study are going to, I'm sure, be open. If anyone would like to attend, they can attend. But that's the reason why we have the information. The mayor was there. He asked, can you send this information to the council so that they understand what you guys are doing? It's nothing to be underhanded or, or behind anyone's back. It's to get a salary study done, hopefully by the end of the year, because these salary studies don't happen overnight. So I just wanted to, to say that right now because if we're going to move forward, it has to be us, not us against them. The water and electric board is not trying to sidestep the council. They are trying to do what's best for the city of Carthage. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I, I appreciate your input. We did, when we agreed to do the salary study, it was, it was intended and, and planned to be a joint effort with input from water and electric and the city as well. So approval wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't come from one or the other, but both. So we, we still need to take a look at it and, and provide any input if possible, but, or if, if needed. I'm sure they've done a, a great job with it and it's going to be fine, but that was the reason that, that we needed that information. So there, there you go. And, and again, when, when we planned to do this in, in May, it was, it was kind of planned as a joint effort with input from both, both parts. Chuck, you and I sat there and talked about, you guys could provide input, we would provide input, we'd pick, pick a, a vendor jointly and then, so that's, that's kind of where we were. But we, we'll move through this and then keep on going and I'm, I'm sure it'll all work out as it should. All right. Any other special committees, the board liaison, Mr. Armstrong?
Thank you, your honor. Not strictly a city special board, but the Battle of Carthage Incorporated, on which I am fortunate enough to serve, is actively looking for board members. It is a working board, so if you would like to volunteer, you can go to their Facebook page and they have an application. But just be aware, as a working board, we are, you are expected to help with the event that's upcoming next June for our four founders.
All right. Where?
Thank you, your honor. The Humane Society Executive Board met on August 17th at 6:30 and discussed possible candidates for a shelter director. They also identified some fundraiser events that they would like to have on an annual basis, one per quarter ideally, beginning with pickleball for Paws, the first annual pickleball for Paws. So all of you on your desk have this flyer. There's a few I put on the table back there. I can get you more if you're interested. This is in conjunction between the Humane Society and Parks and Recs, so it's a good partnership that's happening that I think the community will hopefully get excited about and engaged in. It will take place October 14th and 15th and our next meeting will be on September 21st at 6:30.
All right, thank you.
Yes, the Kellogg Lake Board meeting met, or Kellogg Lake Board met at Omer Funeral Home on August 10th at 6:00 PM. They discussed a lot of the success from Kids Fishing Day. They talked about the ash trees and some possible ways of possibly making it to where we can get the fish population to grow and further information on that may come later. So those were some of the things discussed and I don't think I forgot anything, but, and our next meeting will be announced later.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on. Mayor's report. All right. First, I would, we, we need to have a motion to enter into a contract with Lobber Municipal Law Firm for special counsel and, and general municipal matters as, as a, a second opinion and, and a legal, an outside legal opinion on ordinances and, Mr. Armstrong?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to enter into contract with Lobber Municipal Law Firm for representation. Any discussion?
So is this based upon an hourly rate? Is this, how is, how is?
It would be an hourly rate, yes, yes, only if we call and, and ask for an opinion.
Okay, what's the hourly rate, out of curiosity?
I will try to find it while we're talking.
Thank you.
My question is just about the selection of the firm. Were there bids taken? How, how did we select the firm?
They are one of the, the most respected municipal law firms in, in the state anyway. They represent Branson as their city attorneys and, and they've, they've just, we've been in contact with them and seen them through the Missouri Municipal League. I don't believe we, we didn't contact or do bids, no.
Okay. And for something of this monetary amount, is that not normal procedure to get bids?
I don't think it's necessary for a small, small item like that, but.
So, it's just, because potentially, being an attorney myself, I can tell you- So, it's just, because potentially, being an attorney myself, I can tell you that those fees can rack up depending on what you have. So, do they, I know you mentioned that they're attorneys for Branson. Do they have a great deal of expertise, or is it just that we know that?
Mayor, if you, you want me to explain kind of how it happened? Okay. So, by the way, the attorney rate is $2.25 an hour. It's 95 an hour for support staff. And I can tell you that if you're involved in the MML organization, or you interact with city managers, city administrators, city attorneys, the Lauber Law Firm is the most respected law firm dealing with municipal law. Now, for example, if you want something, a bond or something financed, you'd go to Baker Tilly, or grants, or something like that. And so, just like we went straight to Baker Tilly for grants, when we knew that we needed municipal law interpreted, you know, again, the mayor says, let's have somebody who will be coming in for a work session. That's probably one of the main expenses we're paying for. It was Lauber Municipal Law. So, that's how they were chosen.
One other question, I think, and then I'm done. What is the duration of the contract?
I don't know if there's a, there's no time limit on it. It's basically a contract for as-needed contact.
Yeah, it doesn't have a...
Yeah.
Okay. So, if at some point in the future the city decided to change, they're free to do so? They're not...
Sure. Yeah, there's no... So, after this work session, if you guys are like, okay, that's what we needed to know, then we won't pay, we don't have to pay.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. We also need to look at a motion to move the September 12th council meeting to September 14th at 5:30 as a result of MML.
So moved.
All right. Have a motion and a second to move the September 12th council meeting to September 14th at 5:30. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And just a reminder that we will have a work session Monday at 5:30 with dinner beforehand. Come in, have a little something to eat before we get into the work session.
Just to clarify, that's at 5:30, not 6:30, our normal time, when we move it to Thursday?
I think the dinner is going to, we're going to eat at 5:30 and...
Sorry, back, we're moving the council.
The council, oh, the council meeting. Yeah, we did move it, it did say 5:30.
Okay, just clarifying.
The work session. Again, so what we normally do is have dinner for you upstairs, so that'll be ready at 5:00, and then we normally start the work session.
Start at 5:30.
Agenda is coming out, by the way. We're working on that today.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Will the insurance audits and claims meeting be staying on 12th?
The committee members for that are not attending MML, so they are, they should be available to stay on that date.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to reporter remarks of council members. Mr. Snow?
So, what I said earlier, you know, I have disagreed with probably just about, well, maybe not everybody on this council, but I have disagreed with several people on this council. Just because I have a different opinion or disagree with someone on a particular item doesn't mean I'm going to disagree with that person on every item that they bring forward. So, just because we have disagreements, Mark and I disagreed, we have worked together, I still attend, he attends my committee, I attend his committee, and we work together. That's what we need to do as this council. We need to put differences aside, and if we have a difference, we need to discuss it. I think that's a huge problem that we're having, is that we're not discussing differences. If we just talked about what the differences are, maybe we could come closer together. Because I believe I agree with just about everybody on this council, and I would disagree with probably just about everybody on this council. So, I just want to say, I would like to move forward and let's start working together. I just, these last few weeks have been very difficult for me because I feel like, I feel like just because I disagree with someone, maybe they don't agree with me and so we can't talk about things. I would like to move forward past that. Dave and I have reconciled. I believe Dave and I have a relationship through the years that we've disagreed a lot, and we always find terms that we can come back together and agree on. That's just my comments. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, sir.
So, several times through this process, there have been miscommunications. That's what was agreed to in the June 30th press release, right? So, the city agreed and CWNEP agreed, I believe. I also believe that at that time, there was a gentleman's agreement made that there would be no further communication regarding the issue, no further media communications. So, I don't understand how, if that is true, is that true? That there were to be no further communications from either side? I don't understand how Nate Delli's article appeared in the Wednesday Chronicle this week. I don't think it honored the spirit of that agreement.
And that wasn't, it wasn't initiated by Nate. They requested specific answers to questions. Okay, well, but they asked specific questions and were making specific accusations from the reporter, and he, all he did was respond to that reporter's question. He did. And it was, it was talking about previous articles and asking for clarification. Yeah, I mean, it wasn't like he went looking for someone to write an article about it. It was responding to the request.
I understand. I also believe that there are times that we just say we have no comment at this time. When you were asked about it, Mayor, in the CWNEP board meeting, you said you didn't know any...
And at the time, I wasn't, I had not seen the article and didn't know what it was about.
And I understand, and I get that. I would just share that I think this issue is still being discussed enough in our community that the original intent agreed upon before June 30th should stand in the future. There should be no comments made. We have no comment. And if there is a press release of any form on this, Mayor, I believe that you should approve it before it is distributed to the media. You know, I just think that's the right way to handle this, so that there will be a lack of further disappointment, if you will. Also, at the end of the CWNEP meeting last week, with the three members from CWNEP and the three members from the council, I was there, and at the very end of that meeting, I did hear Brian Schmidt say that CWNEP would be managing the process and that they would keep the city updated. So, I just wanted to share that as well.
And we had discussed that and said that that was not my understanding and that we needed to be involved in the process. So, we're working on that.
I appreciate that. I truly believe that everyone wants to do the right thing here. We all may have different views of what the right thing is. But, my hope is that we can all come together, as Alan shared, and get back to the important work that lays before us, because there's a lot of other things to deal with here. And I'm pleased to be on the city council, and I thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
Thank you. You know, there's been a lot said tonight, and I feel like I took a direct threat in this meeting, and I'd like to address that. Mr. Jeff Meredith, if you threaten to send me a video, I will make my students watch it in class.
We'll move on to...
I have one comment before I move on. I apologize. So, I understand that we're trying to heal the city and we're trying to move forward. Something that has arisen out of this unfortunate CWEB event is that we've had citizens who have begun asking questions. And as I've said many times, I'm an attorney, I deal in facts, I don't deal in feelings, right? And so, whatever the original purpose of asking the questions, there were three questions that came about, and as City Hall already knows, I've been looking into this this summer trying to get answers. And the questions, the main questions were, one, and I apologize to Greg, it's going to be uncomfortable for him, this was part of the hiring process, this is not something that Greg did, but it all surrounds the hiring of the city administrator. And the questions were, was there a committee formed to hire the city administrator per requirements of our code? Was permission given for our city administrator to live outside of the city limits? And was the salary approved by ordinance as required? And unfortunately, the answer to all three of those things is no. Also, in researching this, I didn't discover this until last night, but in the contract for our city administrator, the provision for severance pay is three months if released for some reason other than moral turpitude. Our city code only calls for half a month. And so, we have some problems, two of which we can move past pretty easily. And actually, when we had a phone conversation, I asked for some of these things to show up on our agenda to already be taken care of at the last meeting. I'm disappointed that I didn't see those things, and so that's why I'm bringing up now in public comments. So, I believe the issues of permission to live outside the city limits can actually be addressed pretty easily by vote. Also, the salary being approved by ordinance, when I asked about this at City Hall, what I was told was, well, it's in our budget, and the budget is approved by ordinance, therefore it's approved by ordinance. The problem is, it is not a specific line item in our budget, or in our budget, right? So, there is no way to specifically know at a glance what the salary is. I am not alleging that anybody's trying to hide the salary, but the ordinance specifically calls for the salaries of the mayor and the city administrator to be set forth by ordinance. And the reason for that, I believe, is so that it's just easily discoverable by anybody who wants to know. You can look in the city code, boom, there it is. And the mayor's salary is in there, but the city administrator's is not. If you want to find the city administrator's salary, what you have to do is you have to go back to 2020 minutes, look at the salary study we did, figure out what step we're on, and then do the calculations. That is not clear, that is not easy to find. What is easy to do, though, is each year, as there's a bump in salary, approve it by ordinance. That's what we are required to do. And so, I don't feel like we're definitely not honoring the law. We're not honoring the spirit, and I don't feel like we're honoring the letter of it. So, I'm not making a motion that we do it at this meeting because I want an opportunity for citizen feedback to their council members. But, I believe at the next council meeting, we need to address the issue of permission to live outside of the city limits. Actually, when I asked about that, I was told that our city attorney was asked about that. I have an email, I'm sure it's discoverable by sunshine request, where the hiring committee at that time asked that they, when they hired the city administrator, no contract was presented. The city council did not see the contract, and the permission to live outside the city limits was not in the contract. After the hiring was made, then there was an email from the mayor pro tem at that time to the city attorney, and the city attorney said, well, and I'm paraphrasing, this is not exact language, the exact language would be in the email, well, as long as everybody knew about it, it was okay. That's not, that's bad advice. I'm sorry, Nate, but it is. The requirement is that the council give permission for the city administrator to live outside the city. The council is a body. It cannot, you cannot just infer that permission is given. The council has to make a vote for the council to speak. And so, like I said, this is easily correctable. You can ask the council to give permission now. Those two things are correctable now. The other two issues, in terms of the severance pay, that my concern here is there's no oversight in the contracts. We have literally one person who's responsible for writing that contract. The city council did not see it. I asked current members who were on the council at that time, I asked former council members. We see contracts for everything else. We did, we do not see contracts for directors, we don't see contracts for city administrators. And I believe there should be an ordinance where any contract for a person of a certain position or above should go through city council approval, because government has checks and balances. Right now, we do not have that. We have one person writing a contract, and they literally can put anything in there. And unfortunately, the provision that's with the severance pay, it is in violation of our ordinance, and that is either because you either A, got bad advice, if you took legal advice on that, or B, got good advice and chose not to act on that. Those are the only two possibilities. And I believe that if that had gone through the city council, then we would have had another chance to have a set of eyes on that. But, I believe that we need to address that by ordinance. It's, like I said, these are unintended consequences of the entire CWEB debate, but they're things that need to be addressed.
Well, I disagree with you that there was no hiring committee. There was definitely a hiring committee. The committee developed the job description for assistant city administrator and set it up as a succession plan, so that when the administrator left, the assistant city administrator would move into that position. That was the way it was set up.
That was the intention, but I have read the offer letter, and I asked for it to be sent to me, and I've read it. So, assistant city administrator is not the same job as city administrator. The ordinance requires that there is a hiring committee for city administrator. It's great that there was a hiring committee when he was hired as assistant city administrator, but that does not change the fact that we violated city ordinance when we hired the city administrator. You have to go through the whole process again. And the letter says that the intent is that he will move into that position. That is not the same thing as a job offer. And if it is, then it's actually against city ordinance, you are not allowed to do that. The city ordinance specifically says there has to be a hiring committee at that time. Whether, it doesn't say that you have to interview other candidates, but there should have been a committee to discuss it, and there was not. I spoke to the mayor pro tem, who confirmed there was no hiring committee at the time that Mr. Dagnan, at the time he was promoted from assistant city administrator to city administrator, there was no committee formed. And that is in violation of our city ordinance.
Your Honor?
Mr. Armstrong?
As one of the two council members left from that period, I would like to say publicly that Ms. Cossey has never spoken to me or asked me a question about these events, and it is my opinion she is deliberately selecting facts to manipulate a narrative.
Well, you can make that statement, but I know what side of the fence you fall on. I know that you're...
Is there offense?
Quite often with...
I thought they were just facts.
Right. But what I'm saying is, having the discussion with you is, it doesn't matter who I select. I've had the discussion with...
So, lie interpretation doesn't matter?
I have not spoken to, there are 10 city council members. I did not go out and speak to all 10.
But you deliberately said that you spoke to members on the council who are currently here.
That's right. Mr. Snow...
There are only two.
No, Mr. Snow was on the council at the time.
Right, there's me and Mr. Snow.
Right, I spoke to him. I also spoke to former city council members. And so, I've spoken to four or five people who were council members at that time. And regardless of whether I spoke with you or not, it does not change the facts that a committee was not formed.
I would disagree that it does change the facts, because you're selectively interpreting facts to suit your narrative.
So, describe to me how I'm selectively interpreting the facts.
This is not the place for that discussion.
I'm guessing that's because you don't have an appropriate response, Mr. Armstrong. I understand that you and I disagree frequently, and I'm sorry that this disagreement is in the spirit of the calls for reconciliation, but the facts are the facts. There was no committee formed prior to hiring Mr. Dagnan as the city administrator. Now, I want to be clear, I'm going to be really unpopular with both City Hall and with the populace when I leave here. This is not a call to fire Mr. Dagnan or to replace him in any way. I don't feel that he has anything to do with it, just as any of us. When we go for a job, we are not in charge of the hiring process over us. This falls to our, to our mayor, unfortunately, and I don't have a personal problem with our mayor. I know people, people have, think very highly of him, and, but as a leader, there, there is a problem here. And like I said, it's either there was bad legal advice or there, or you ignored legal advice, one of those two things, because we did not follow city ordinance, not only on that, but on multiple issues.
All right, well, we'll look into that, I disagree with you, but we'll take it under consideration. All right, we'll move on to administrative reports, Mr. Daley.
Where to start? So, the Wednesday paper was an email that went to the mayor and I, so that was a draft that I sent to the mayor, which he reviewed and went out, so I don't, I mean, that's not, there were specific questions related to previous stories they had ran. I think that if somebody interpreted ever anything we said that the board had committed criminal activity, I hope that they understand that I, not me or anybody at the city side has ever alleged that criminal activity took place. I heard that somebody said that today, I hope that they don't think that. I don't think anybody thinks that the board's ever committed criminal activity. In fact, I think we've said that they didn't violate it once we knew what was happening violating anything. I hope that that came across in the, that was the intent of what we submitted. So, I think one of the things we've talked about with the law firm is addressing the issues that Ms. Cossey has, and so I think that we obviously disagree on most of those things, so that we can ask this other law firm that during the work session, and that'll be an open meeting on Monday. As far as city business goes, there's a lot of council bills and a lot of contracts, some, some rezoning that's gone on. It's always fun to try to map out legal descriptions, but with the help of Public Works and the owner of the property, we've been able to get, I think, the right stuff done to rezone, is that, that's up tonight. As far as the ethics ordinance from the Missouri Ethics Commission goes, the, we kind of have two different things here. This is the ethics ordinance for them versus our ethics ordinance that we have for the city, they have not been combined. This one came on, it prevents essentially the people other than, I believe the city administrator has to, and maybe the mayor, that has to file a financial disclosure with them anyway, prevents you all from having to do stuff, we passed that, and so by approving the one that's on the agenda tonight, it, it doesn't change anything that's in our current ethics ordinance, it just adopts this so you don't have to file that with the Ethics Commission going forward. As far as Open Gov goes, we're just going through the contract, as I think some of you, maybe only two of you were on, like apparently two of you were on the council, because this was done with, when Mr. Short was still here. We entered that contract with Open Gov, and I think at the time, all of us thought it was a good idea, their demonstration was very good. As I said earlier, it's like watching a movie about futuristic stuff, because that's what they present you, but what it can do is not that, and they, so we're, I'm going through the contract now to see what kind of outs we have in regard to what services they're providing versus what they told us would be there. I think I gave a court update last time on Omnigo, our ticket system, and the state, if anybody goes to CaseNet, I've kind of been in your own world at times as an attorney, that you think everybody knows what CaseNet is, it's our city court, state court, other cities around us all report to CaseNet. It used to be you had to be an attorney to click the hyperlinks and read what's on there, that is going to be an open system starting July 1, anything that gets filed after that, anybody can see, so we have to redact all the personal information off a lot of everything that gets filed. So the concern was, our ticketing system that we have was not syncing correctly with the state that has been fixed, and so it submits two tickets to per, one's redacted, one's not in compliance with the state, so until we decide to switch systems, we're good to go, at least I think at this point. I don't think I have anything else at this point, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief Hawkins.
Just a couple of positive things going on at the police department. We have two potential officers in the academy right now, I have one in background, getting close to the end of the background phase, and once that happens, we will be full staff, and I'm very excited about it.
Great, good deal, thank you. Chief Huntley.
We've been participating, let's see, last weekend, we had the great Stutstock, we were out there all day Saturday and supplied the water and kept the kids wet, and next weekend, we will be, or I guess this weekend, we will be out at the cattle battle, participating in it, so, just out playing around.
Good deal, good deal, thank you, sir. Mr. Carney.
I have nothing to report tonight, Your Honor.
All right, Ms. Almendinger.
I just wanted to show my appreciation for the YMCA and Jonathan and his aquatic staff, who did a fabulous job over this summer keeping us afloat, literally. It was a great partnership, as we both learned a lot, as you mentioned earlier, and I wanted to invite everybody to come out to the ribbon cutting for the Carter Park Playground tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock, it's going to be searing, but we are excited to get that playground open, thank you, Your Honor.
Great, thank you. Ms. Cox. Mr. Dagnan.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So, as previously mentioned by Mr. Snow, we have hired a tourism director, it's, it's really, it's not a secret, but I'm not going to announce it tonight, because a formal announcement is coming out, if you want to know, I'll tell you, but the formal announcement is coming out, she'll be starting the second week in September, right after we get back from MML, she'll be starting. And as Mr. Snow pointed out, she already has a task or two that she will need to do quickly when she starts. I have been asked several times by people in this room and the community, if there are recall petitions, we have been in contact with the county clerk, and he is not analyzing any signatures, so at this point, there are no recall petitions. So that's why you had nothing on your agenda tonight about that. You have other information in my report. Regarding public comment, I normally don't say anything, but I'm going to say something tonight. I have dedicated my adult life, my adult work life, to this city, I have worked here since 2008. This city is very important to me, other than God and my family, what is best for this city is pretty much all I think about all day, every day. And I'm not perfect, I realize that when you take a job like this, when things go wrong in the city, I get the blame, and sometimes it's my fault and sometimes it's not, but I realize that it's my fault, because I'm the city administrator, and I'm more than willing to take that blame. All I would ask is that if people think something's going on, or they heard something's going on, I am an open book, I will meet with anybody in this room, I will meet with anybody in this city, I will meet with anybody that has concerns about the city. And what I am told is that one of my weaknesses is that you may not like the answer I give you, but it's the honest answer. So I will meet with anybody and give honest feedback on what is going on, and then you can make your decision, right, as a citizen. So that's what I would challenge our citizens to do, someone called for, well, lots of people have called for transparency earlier, and that's part of it, is getting both sides of the story. And that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Thanks, sir. We'll move on to report of claims against the city.
The Committee on Claims filed a report in the amount of $834,460.79.
Ms. Blair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the report and allow the claims.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the report and allow the claims, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will move on to old business.
Second reading of Council Bill 23-53, an ordinance levying general taxes upon real property located within the city of Carthage, Jasper County, Missouri, for the year 2023, the general revenue purposes and other purposes, and fixing the rates thereof.
Any discussion? Mr. Snow.
Just like to remind everyone that again, there is no change in the rates from last year to this year, so this is just a continuation of our existing tax rate, tax levy.
All right, anything further? Okay, Mr. Rhodes.
No. I was. Yes. I did that before. I did that before.
It must have.
It must have.
Do you need to send it again for it to show up on him? He had to rejoin the meeting.
Uh, yeah, we can scroll. Scroll up. Yeah.
Well, we know it's not a tornado.
Okay, natural.
No, I haven't.
Council bill passes.
Bear with me, I'm learning.
I love technology.
Okay. Second reading of Council Bill 23-54, an ordinance amending the annual operating and capital budget city of Carthage for fiscal years 2022 to 2023, and 2023 to 2024, for specified funds. General fund, fire protection tax fund, park stormwater sales tax fund, civic enhancement fund, capital improvements tax fund, public facilities fund, use tax fund, ARPA fund, public health fund, and public safety fund.
Any discussion? Mr. Snow.
I believe it was mentioned earlier in Ms. Blair's report from the Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims, that Ms. Cox will be closing out this year tomorrow. This is part of that closing out, getting the funds balanced, the projects, and those types of things, so that's what this is for.
All right, cast your votes. Council bill passes.
Second reading of Council Bill 23-55, an ordinance rezoning certain property on 815 West Central Avenue in the city of Carthage from D local business and B second dwelling to E general business as requested by Jason Shipp.
Any discussion? Mr. Armstrong.
For those who are wondering what this lot is, this is the lot which encompasses the old Fairview School property.
Popo. Popo.
I went to grade school.
All right, anything further? Cast your votes. Council bill passes. And I'll move on to new business.
First reading of Council Bill 23-56, an emergency ordinance to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal office officials.
Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Armstrong.
Do we need to send this to a second reading? A motion to advance this to a second reading based on its emergency status.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to advance this to second reading as, as it is an emergency status. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second reading of Council Bill 23-56, an emergency ordinance to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials.
Any discussion? Cast your votes. Council bill passes.
First reading of Council Bill 23-57, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fairway IQ Incorporated to provide an annual subscription for GPS sensors for golf carts in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion? All right.
First read of Council Bill 23-58, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Fair Acres YMCA Incorporated for use agreement for a golf simulator in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion? Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to say thank you to the YMCA and the Parks Department, as I reviewed this contract, I thought it was very fair. I know in the past, I have been critical of some of the YMCA contracts, I thought this was a great contract, and they did a great job, and I'm very excited for the golf simulator, I think that's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
First read of Council Bill 23-59, an ordinance repealing and replacing the cost recovery fees for the Parks Department in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion? All right.
First reading of Council Bill 23-60, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute amendments to the police and fire pension plan to change the trust service provider.
Any discussion? Mr. Snow.
When Mr. Collier made his report earlier, is this not time sensitive also, that it needs to be?
No.
No, okay, I, I couldn't remember, I thought he said it was going to happen Sep, the end of September, or? Oh, end of December, okay. Sorry. Thank you, sorry, Your Honor.
Thank you, all right.
First reading of Council Bill 23-61, an ordinance authorizing a special use permit for a one licensed operator beauty shop by Brittany Parrish and her residence at 1330 Glenwood Place in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion? All right, we'll move on to mayor's appointment.
The appointment of Joe Ryder to the McCune Brooks Hospital Board until January 2027.
Mr. Allen.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt or approve the mayor's appointment to the hospital trust.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the nominee, or the appointment of the McCune Brooks Hospital Board, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The reappointment of Bill Barksdale to the Planning, Zoning, and Historic Preservation Commission until August 2027.
Mr. Allen.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the mayor's appointment to Planning, Zoning, and Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appointment to Planning, Zoning, and Historic Preservation, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The reappointment of Michael Miller to the Care Leave Committee until August 2025.
Mr. Armstrong.
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve the appointment of Michael Miller to the Care Leave Committee.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the appointment of. Have a motion and a second to accept the appointment of Mr. Miller to the Care Leave Committee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to resolutions.
Resolution 2006, a resolution of the Council of the City of Carthage, Missouri, expressing support of the city's application for funds through MoDOT's Transportation Alternatives (TAP) program, and authorizing the submission of an application relating to the proposed Carthage Sidewalk Improvements Project, Airport Drive from River to 571, and Fairview from River to Pearl in the city of Carthage, Missouri.
Mr. Armstrong.
Your Honor, I motion for the approval of Resolution 2006.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2006. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Resolution stands adopted. That concludes our business for the evening. Closing comments. Mr. Armstrong.
Nothing further tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Blair.
I've got a few comments. I wish my day job wasn't as relevant right now as it seems to be, but as a psychologist, I often talk to clients about a couple of things, and one of them I would just like to remind all of you about, too. Feelings aren't bad, feelings aren't good, feelings are feelings. It's what we do with them that matters. And so I encourage you all on council and as our constituents to use those feelings constructively to get answers to questions you have, to make changes that you want to have in a way that's respectful and that contributes to that call for unity that a lot of people have been requesting. So on council and in the community, I would encourage you all to focus on that. And the second thing is I help a lot of people with perspective taking, and I think that's an important note to end on tonight for all the challenges we've had. I can say that none of us signed up to do this public service intending it to be the way that it has been the last few months. None of us want that. It has been hard. There have been challenges in the community, and there's a lot going on that we should be really proud of and that I am very proud of to be part of this community. So many things that we're getting ready for with, excuse me, with Maple Leaf, with how the departments have been so engaged in the community to help with kids, to help with nonprofits. This is an amazing place to live in and to be from, and I don't want us to lose sight of that despite all of the friction that's been happening lately. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Heckmaster.
I can't follow that.
Mr. Hardesty.
I can't. I'm not a psychologist. I say it the way I see it. I'm tired of the finger pointing. I expect to see it the next sign up for council positions, at least three for every position. Stop pointing your fingers, put your money where your mouth is, and try to do this with everybody telling you you're wrong, and you don't count, and you're stupid, and you're inept, and you don't know what you're doing. You come up here and sit and comment back and listen to what everybody's opinion of is of people that you think are your friends. Come up here and try it. I dare you. Some of you have been up here. You know what it's like, but yet you're on the side of the finger pointing. Knock it off. That's part of the division. Work with us. I am proud of all of the city employees. I am proud of my administrator, and I am proud of my mayor, the same way I'm proud of the CWP employees that bust their butt every day in 120 degrees and 30 degree temperature and wind blowing and trees down and keeping our power on and keeping our communication going. I am proud of them all, and I am proud of my city council members. Stop the finger pointing. You're helping the division. Ask us questions. We'll answer the best we can, and then you trust the damn answer. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Snow?
I know it's a little bit hard to believe, but with the temperature outside today over 100, but the first day of school yesterday is, for me, the change of season. Summer is gone. We're in fall. Carthage football is going to be back. Carthage soccer is going to be back. Teachers, thank you for what you do with our schools. Hopefully, you get a group of students this year that are going to be better than last, or at least the same as last. So to me, this is the change of season, and I'm looking forward to cooler weather and Carthage Tiger football. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Elliff.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Ms. Coxey.
Just a couple of things. One, I would like to echo some of what Mr. Hardesty said. I believe that all of our elected city council members, even the ones that I disagree with, I believe their intentions here are pure. I believe they are voting their conscience. I know some are taking a very hard hit, including my fellow ward member, Mr. Elliff, and I know that this isn't going to be popular when I say this to some people, but I believe he is a man of conscience, as are all of our council members, and I feel like everyone is owed a big thank you for coming up and doing this job. So I absolutely support everybody's right to vote the way they do and to feel the way they do, as long as it's based on pure intentions. And then along that line, I would just like to encourage our city to have more transparency and to act in accordance with our ordinances. I've been very disappointed with some of the answers that I found. When I researched, I expected to find much simpler, easier answers to my questions, and instead what I found was that we violated our ordinances, and in some conversations, I feel like I've been invited to sweep that under the rug. And I have, I know I've been accused of having an agenda. I have plenty of other things on my plate. I don't have to be here. I don't profit from this. I have no agenda other than trying to do what's right. I understand that's not always popular, and I'm probably going to walk out of here the least popular person in the room, and still, I do it. That's my closing comment.
Thank you. Enter.
I do want to say to Mr. Snow, you did mention that we passed that we would do a seller study, and we haven't done anything towards it. I thought that that was the whole point of having the ad hoc committee, was so that we could work together with council and with the board to come to an agreement on that, so that's where I'm coming from on that. I do want to give Julie a shout out. Julie, beautiful. I love it. It is highlighted. I love how it is just so concise, and it made everything so easy this year. So I know this is your second Maple Leaf, and I just want to give you a huge shout out and tell you I appreciate all of your hard work for this. And that's it, Your Honor.
Mr. Taylor.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Ms. Blanketship.
Stay hydrated and safe, and I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.